I call the Board of Trustees meeting for January 10th at 7:00 PM. I call the meeting to order. Can we see him for the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America. In good republic, where wish stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Ms. Grove, will you take role, please?
Trustee Mears? Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Harshhorn?
Yes.
Okay, and at this time, we have a guest speaker, Montgomery County Treasurer, John McManus, like to come up.
That's fast.
I talked a little fast.
Members of the board, it's great to be with you here this evening. Madam Fiscal Officer, Staff, good to be with you. And thank you so much for making the time. That's a real pleasure to be here. My name's John McManus, and I have the honor of serving as the Montgomery County Treasurer. And been in office for about a year and four months, and it's been wonderful. And part of the, the great responsibilities of being treasurer is building wonderful relationships with local school districts, local townships, local cities, so that our office and the county in general can help you with any issues that either you or your constituents may need. And so, one of the things that Missy and I, Missy is with the Treasurer's Office. She serves as the Director of External Affairs. If you ever need anything, she's fantastic, so make sure you reach out to her. One of the things we've been doing quite often is really traveling across the entire county to meet with other locally elected officials to tell you a little bit about what we do at the Treasurer's Office and how we can help your constituents and how we might be of service to you. So, I'm gonna talk primarily about two things tonight. Number one is how I can, of course, help your local taxpayers here in Perry Township, and also help you as a township, should you so choose. So I brought with me a very fun and exciting packet. So I've got, who doesn't love a good notepad? So, they're the best looking ones in the county, I promise you. And along with, and sir, I'm gonna leave you my packet as soon as I'm done with it, so you have one too. Absolutely. And along with a general information guide about the office, which will tell you, and I'm sure you already know what the Treasurer's Office does. But the Treasurer serves three main roles. Number one, as the county's Chief Investment Officer, we have a fund of about $700 million. That is very, very carefully and prudently invested in order to earn a return for the taxpayers and offset various county expenditures, which is a good thing. Number two, of course, is serving as the county's banker, responsible for the safeguarding of all county deposits. And that's a very big and very important job. You know, there are some days you look down and you have a billion dollars on deposit, and you kind of stop and say for a minute, okay, you know, that's, that's, that's a lot of capital that we have to ensure is both invested but also protected with fidelity and integrity. And number three, of course, is serving as the county's property tax collector. So, everybody loves that. And so that's a big, big job. We have over 250,000 real estate parcels in Montgomery County, and I'm responsible for collecting property taxes on each one of them, as long as they're not tax exempt. And we send out bills generally twice a year. And so that's, that's a big, big responsibility. Obviously, there are school districts, local governments, the parks, the libraries that are counting on that funding. And, you know, I, I knew when I got elected and then ran for the position before that, you know, being the property tax collector, no one loves paying their property taxes, me included. So I said, alright, if everybody's paying their property taxes, one of the things I can do at least is see what we can do to go out of our way to the greatest extent to make it the very best possible customer service, and also let folks know and local governments know what tools we have at our disposal to be of assistance. So I will, I will be brief, so you have time to answer questions if that's what you'd like. So in your packet, there are a couple things. I'd like to talk a little bit about what we can do to help your constituents first. So, out. This little piece of paper here is done by my predecessor. You'll see here, this is something we send out with every single tax bill that goes out across the county. This is actually a great program. This is called our prepayment program. This is something that not a lot of counties in Ohio have. And it's really nice, and even some of the bigger counties don't have this, and they're coming to Montgomery County to find out, you know, what we do and how we do it, and because they want to replicate that in their county. Essentially, what taxpayers can do, and we find this to be very helpful with many taxpayers, is sign up to have their taxes prepaid. As we all know, sometimes writing one check or two checks a year on your, on your real estate parcel can be, that's a big check to write in, in, for any family. And so one thing that's nice is, in Montgomery County, we allow and we provide an avenue, this being prepayment, for individuals to sign up for monthly payments. And that's really nice. Obviously, 12 payments is a lot more manageable, if you will, than one or two. And we also allow for that to be electronically withdrawn from individuals' bank accounts, should they choose, and so it makes it really easy. So that, this program has grown exponentially in Montgomery County, and it's been great. And taxpayers have really liked it, and it's really picking up steam across the state. So if you, if you have a constituent out there that says, hey, you know, sometimes I just forget to pay my property taxes. Well, or they want to make their life just a little bit easier, I hope you will make them aware of that program, or at least direct them to us, and we will be able to have. Another thing, and this is really important, you know, when I, and I'm turning the second page here, the delinquents, delinquent pre, delinquent contract. When I came into office a year and several months ago, the county had a delinquent tax balance, almost a quarter billion dollars. I mean, can you imagine carrying that type of revolving debt essentially on books? That's just, that's just unsustainable. So we have worked very, very hard in a year to collect as much as possible. We're probably, after this lien sale we just completed, probably close to the 70 or 80 million dollars in delinquent taxes collected in a year, and that is huge. And that is good. That's good for folks who, throughout their whole life, who have owned property, who have been diligent about meeting their financial obligations. That's good for them because it's fair. We're making sure that the rules are the same across the board and that everybody's meeting their financial obligations. You know, obviously, if you're a taxpayer and you've been paying your taxes all your life, you know, you want to make sure that there's, that there's equity in collection, and that, you know, these things aren't just allowed to, you know, grow out of control. So, that's really, really important. Obviously, as we, as you probably know, 60% of every property tax dollar that you pay is earmarked for your local school district, for the taxpayer's local school district. And so that's, that's critically important. I was a school board member before I was treasurer, and that's important for, for the schools. Of course, we see in the paper all the time, school districts are just fighting for revenue every single day. It's just getting more and more expensive to, to educate communities' children. So, what is a delinquency contract and why is that important? As you all know, you know, part of the, part of the difficult but necessary job of any county treasurer is enforcing collection. Worst case scenario, what does that look like if someone's not paying their taxes? Either A, they have a lien sold on their home by my office, or they are foreclosed on. So the treasurer in any county serves as the plaintiff in all property tax foreclosures. And so that is part of my responsibility. However, one great tool that we have at our disposal is this delinquency contract. The delinquency contract is available for folks in the county who may, may be delinquent. And it allows them to come into our office and to get onto a payment plan to help them get back on track. And I'll tell you in a minute how we've really tried shoring up and cleaning up this process. How it works is, is a 20%, we require 20% of their delinquency down, and then we put them on month to month in order to get back on track, pay off their delinquencies. But in that plan, they're also paying on their current taxes, so they're not inherently falling behind, which is, of course, very important. I tell people often, you know, because some folks, they may have a lien sold on their home, or we may have to file foreclosure, and they say, man, I've been, I've been sending in money, you know, here and there for a year or two. And I say, man, you know, that's just not the way it works. You know, you can't just send in a hundred bucks here, a hundred buck there, and maybe, you know, 200 the next month. If you're not current, you've really got to get on a plan. We have to have you registered as part of that plan. And that then keeps that individual off of the tax lien eligibility list and the foreclosure eligibility list, but they've got to be on that plan. So, I talk about these plans often because I hate to see, obviously, a lien being sold on someone's home or someone being foreclosed on. If you know of somebody in Montgomery County, whether it's one of your constituents or in a neighboring township, who may be behind on his or her property taxes, or business for that matter, please refer them to the Treasurer's Office. In fact, you as elected officials, I welcome you to get in touch with both, either Missy or I directly, and we can reach out to them and see if they're eligible for one of these plans. I will say that one of the, one of the things we did this past year was to really kind of clean up the, the delinquency payment plan process. There were just too many examples of folks in the past getting on five, six, seven payment plans and never really with the intention of getting current. And that's, that just was not fair to people who want to deal with the county in good faith. So we, you know, we have limited payment plans. If you've been on a bunch before, you're probably not going to get on. You know, you just gotta pay your debt in full. But if you've never been on a payment plan, then we can, we can work with you. So, I also have something in here about how individuals can pay their property taxes. Obviously, they can do so by check, or they can do so with a credit or debit card on the Treasurer's website or with a bank transfer, believe it or not. Actually, it wasn't till, some county offices, it wasn't till maybe like two years ago, where they started accepting various payments electronically, which is wild to think about in a county of our size, but that's the case. So we're really happy to make it easy on people. Moving on, I'd like to tell you a little bit about how the Treasurer's Office can assist the township. So, I also serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the Montgomery County Land Bank. Land Bank is often in a position to assist local governments with various property needs, whether they be abandoned, neglected, et cetera. The Treasurer, Treasurer's Office also has the ability to work with local governments to address property issues where a foreclosure may be the best course of action. Now, one thing to note is there are various types of property foreclosures. I want to tell you about two. One is known as an expedited foreclosure. I don't know if Perry Township ever did an expedited foreclosure in the past, but I have what you see here in your packet, this Board of Revision Expedited Foreclosure Checklist. As Treasurer, I'm one of the three members of the Board of Revision. Ohio law provides for something called an expedited foreclosure. It's actually an administrative foreclosure. Everybody knows what a foreclosure is. You know, somebody is, is seeking to recover a debt, and they are seeking to recover their revenue by virtue of pushing a piece of real estate to sheriff's sale through a court case. That's the traditional way, going to court, going to sheriff's sale. However, there is a different avenue that's available to local governments and the land bank and several other statutory bodies called the expedited foreclosure. How that works is, a local government or the land bank can submit to the Treasurer an application naming a particular piece of property. That property obviously has to be tax delinquent, and there are several other criteria. That allows the, also abandoned or neglected, et cetera. That allows the Treasurer to then work with the prosecutor, who gives it a case number to Board of Revision case. That case, rather than going to the Court of Common Pleas, goes to the Board of Revision. The Board of Revision or myself, the county auditor Carl Keith, and the Chair of the County Commission, now Debbie Lieberman, and our representatives adjudicate that foreclosure administratively. And so it's, it's quick. The good part about an expedited foreclosure is that property does not go up for sheriff's sale. That property, assuming that the, the case is successfully adjudicated, that property then reverts back to the filer, i.e. to local government. And so it really helps with economic development on distressed properties. One thing I should note is the, the property owner, should he or she choose to fight it, can always eject that case from the administrative path to the court side, and so then it, it takes a different form. But that's one way that the Treasurer's Office across the state of Ohio plays a critically important role with local governments. There'd be some other properties that may not be eligible for this expedited foreclosure, even though they're tax delinquent. It really comes down to the value of the property versus the delinquency, in which case, traditional foreclosure may be appropriate. But if there's, if there are, you know, neglected, abandoned hazardous properties in your jurisdiction, I, I invite you to, to work with the Treasurer's Office on seeing if there's a solution there. So that's really, that's a really important one. Secondly, how can the Treasurer's Office help local governments? We engage in something called manuscript debt, every single Treasurer's Office does, where it's essentially a public financing option. Pretty popular in the northern portion of the county. I'm close to here, several years ago, where local governments essentially were coming to the Treasurer's Office to try and secure public funding for various public works projects. That uses and works with our investment fund, and we are often able to provide really good terms, delayed payments, lower interest rates. I expect that to be a more, more popular option as we come into this very high interest rate environment that we are seeing now. Money's not as cheap as it used to be, and we all know that. Lastly, how can, how can the Treasurer's Office help local governments? Data. You know, there are local governments all across this county who say, can you give us a list of every single tax delinquent property in our jurisdiction so that we can reach out to the owner, try and get him current, so we can, you know, maybe come to expect revenue that we think we should be getting, at least on paper? Or can you provide us a list of tax delinquent properties, so we can coordinate, see if any of them are abandoned and neglected, to see if, hey, maybe there's a solution out there for them? If it involves real estate, either the Treasurer's Office and/or the Auditor's Office will be able to help you. So I invite you to do that. Lastly, I want to tell you about one option. It actually helps your constituents, rather than the township, and I neglected to cover it. This program absolutely exploded in popularity during the last year and a half. The most common question I got, and continue to get, frankly, is from, it's depositor foreclosure. From constituents is, is there any program in the county that allows individuals to go after essentially tax delinquent property for either investment purposes or rehab purposes, or simply acquisition purposes, so they can find a home for themselves? And the answer is yes. It is a depositor foreclosure program. The, although we've made great strides in one short year in the collection of delinquent taxes, there are still plenty of tax delinquent properties in Montgomery County. So, how does a depositor foreclosure work? And by the way, it, this is not found in every county. It's limited to the larger counties in Ohio. I think it's actually statutorily limited to the larger counties in Ohio, but you will not find these in surrounding counties. Depositor foreclosure is a program that's exclusively run by the Treasurer's Office. It allows individuals to come into the Treasurer's Office and after they have identified a particular tax delinquent property. Please note that with depositor foreclosure, unlike expedited foreclosure that I covered, depositor foreclosure, the property does not have to be abandoned, it can be occupied. And the property also does not have to be underwater and in positions to value. It can just be tax delinquent. And an individual can come into the Treasurer's Office with a deposit. It's $2,000 for a residential property, $3,000 for commercial industrial property. They bring that deposit, they fill out this application. Treasurer's Office then screens the property to ensure that it is eligible for a judicial foreclosure that involves the court and sheriff's sale. Assuming it is eligible, we then, again, work with the prosecutor, submit that property in a case to the Court of Common Pleas, where it is treated like any other tax foreclosure that is handled by my office. At the conclusion of that court case, assuming that the property owner has not paid off his or her debt in its entirety, that property then goes to sheriff's sale. And the depositors then afforded the opportunity to essentially force the county's, you know, hand, if you will, to foreclose on a property for the opportunity to then bid on that property in a public auction. And if the depositor is the winner of the property, he or she, that deposit is credited towards the sale. If he or she is not the winner of the property, the depositor gets either all or most of that deposit back. That, that deposit is used to cover court costs, essentially. And so this program really, really has taken off. You know, I think across the country, when you're in the middle of a real estate boom, everybody sees folks making money on real estate. Everybody wants to be a real estate investor. And so it has been extraordinarily successful. We have returned a great deal of tax delinquency back to the regular tax rolls, and people have been able to acquire homes for themselves, but also investment properties. And frankly, properties that, that had been neglected and just not taken care of for a long time, and it really has improved a lot of neighborhoods in Montgomery County, which is great. So I will end there. I know it's a lot of information. But, before I close, I would like to direct you to this. This is kind of a breakdown, and you can see how well Perry Township is doing. I mean, I, I was talking with Missy in the car. I think Perry Township has the lowest amount of delinquency of any, of any local government jurisdiction in the county, which is terrific. So as you can see here, this is just kind of a breakdown of what we see on our end. This is based on the Auditor's Tax Roll, this information here. You can see the total number of taxes billed in Perry Township in '21, along with the number of taxable parcels, as long as the breakdown by type of parcels in Perry Township. You can see, I mean, isn't this great? Out of, out of all of your taxable parcels in Perry Township, you only have 15. 15 that are a little behind schedule in terms of revenue, with not even $40,000 owed. That is just a real outlier. And so I think you all should be very proud of your constituents, your property owners, because that data really speaks for itself. So congratulations to everybody. And with that, I will end there, and I'm happy to entertain any questions, should you have them. Oh, yes.
I didn't want to ask it, but I thought it was like, alright, let's hear it.
Can a property bought without paying the back taxes on it?
Can a, can a tax delinquent property be bought without paying the back taxes on it? Actually, this is something we are addressing with our lobbyists today. Yes, I mean, properties are, are transferred ownership all the time, unfortunately, in the state of Ohio, where the back taxes are not satisfied at the time of sale or conveyance. And frankly, it causes real issues, local governments trying to collect that revenue. You know, some people, even with the best, are not with the best intentions, who like to play games to avoid their financial responsibilities, like to quitclaim deed properties back and forth to try and make it more difficult for enforcement actions. So yes, a, a property can absolutely, in the state of Ohio, be, be conveyed or purchased without the back taxes being satisfied. You're probably not going to get a general warranty deed, but you'll, you can, you know, quitclaim deed that, that parcel all day long.
Well, I think, I think we all know we're probably going to be reaching out to your office to deal with properties in Perry, or in Pyramid to make sure that we are doing everything we can to, and hopefully expedite these.
Yes.
Since it's been taking so long, so.
Yes.
And we do, right as of now, have two properties that we are working with land banks on.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, you know, I, I will say, working with local governments, local elected officials is a genuine passion of mine. I love working with local governments to, to, you know, come together, find solutions that the county has at its disposal in order to really improve, you know, the environment for, for, you know, local government officials. I would love to work with you on looking for solutions for properties that you may have. That's, that's, that's great to hear. And so please follow up with us, and we will take a look at each individual parcel, if it involves coordinating with the prosecutor's office, or the land bank, or, or anybody else, auditor's office. We're happy to help facilitate that, and we can look for a solution for you.
Okay, awesome.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think I left my cards in my car, but I will make sure that at the end of this.
Your website every day.
God bless you. That's great. That's great. That's wonderful. Yes, please, by all means, I'd love to hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Well, members of the board, Madam Fiscal Officer, staff, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you this evening. I appreciate that. I know you've got some constituents in here waiting, so thank you all for your patience. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
You guys don't want to stick around, you're more than welcome to.
I love this kind of thing.
Okay, moving on. So I make a motion for the consent of agenda.
Second motion.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Mears? Trustee Harshhorn?
Yes.
Okay, fiscal.
So I've been working on the year end. The UAN has been updated to 2023.1. It's all been completed. I actually got a notification today, though, that I have a new update with tax tables are changing, so I'm gonna have to go in and get that one updated as well. We are set up in the UAN for temp mode. What this does is this allows me to work between years 2022 to finish everything up there, getting ready to close the year, and still work in 2023 at the same time. December's bank reconciliation is complete, but has not been posted, pending completion of the year-end requirements. Total amount from all resources available has been prepared and submitted to the county auditors. What they'll do is they'll take those numbers, and that's how they'll certify what our official certificate of estimated resources is to start off 2023. Once we have that, then we'll be able to go in and do permanent appropriations from there. All of the 2022 blanket certificates and purchase orders have been adjusted and closed. Payroll withholdings and any other charges have been completed. The revenue budget has been entered for fiscal year 2023. Temporary appropriations have been entered for fiscal year 2023 per Resolution 2257 that was passed on December 12th, 2022 by the Board of Trustees and filed with Montgomery County Auditor's Office. And new blanket certificates and purchase orders are being created at this time. Upcoming events is I will be attending the OTA Winter Conference on January 25th through 27th. The trustees all received the reallocate, or supplemental reallocations and appropriations for Um, yeah, the trustees all received the reallocate or supplemental reallocations and appropriations for December two thousand twenty-three. With a net increase of five thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars that it's going to be resolution number eighteen twenty-two eighteen. Does that sound right?
No.
Let me look at the last one. Sorry. I forgot to carry that number over. Yeah, it'd be twenty-three eighteen.
Twenty-three eighteen.
Twenty-three eighteen. So I just need to have uh, one of the trustees entertain the motion to approve resolution twenty-three eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
And then I also forwarded to all the trustees, the memorandum of agreement. This is for where we are scheduled for audit through a independent CPA firm. That was sought by the county auditor's office. They awarded it to Charles E. Harrison Associates. Um, I forwarded to the trustees, the M O A, which needs or yeah, M O A, which needs to be signed. As well as the proposal which breaks down the cost. For our audit, it's going to be done for three audit cycles is what the contract with Charles E. Harris, the county. Auditor's Office awarded for twenty twenty-two, it's a fixed rate of seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. For years ending twenty twenty-four is going to be a fixed rate of eight thousand dollars. And for years ending twenty twenty-six is going to be a fixed rate of eight thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So I will need to have. Um, probably trustee uh, mirror sign it as the president trustee.
I have a question about.
Yes.
Though Charles E. Harris Company is doing our audit.
There is no conflict. I've already verified that as far as for the Hinkle notes, that's completely separate.
Just making sure.
Yep. They said they do it all the time. Um, and actually they're really the only ones that even bid for the area.
Okay.
So. Yeah, that was my first question when they approached us and I verified that they said that there was no problem with it. Um, a couple other things have come to my attention. Uh, Chief Littleton approached me. We have a police officer that was hired. On April the twelfth of two thousand twenty-two as a full-time officer. He started to accrue his vacation and sick leave time. Per the current policy. Um, an employee is supposed to be employed with the township for one year before they have use of the accrued time. Um, he went to a part-time status as of October third. And he is requesting to cash out his vacation leave. I told Chief Levelton that I would have to bring that to the Board of Trustees. And you guys would have to make the determination whether that would be allowable.
I feel that he has to wait till April twenty-second. Sorry. That's what the board policy is. That's my feeling.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty certain he is not going to be an employee of the township at that time.
I understand he's leaving in a couple.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, when he was hired on, he understood the terms that he hired into. And uh, I don't, I don't feel comfortable. Maybe just like someone quitting and ask to cash it out before the year. That doesn't.
I concur.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. So I will inform chief of that. Um, chief also brought me a bill today. Um, with the winter storm that we had over Christmas. It looks like we had gone and picked up a generator for backup use in case the electric went out. So he presented me with a bill today of five hundred and seventy dollars. I need to know how we're going to pay that. How is it going to be split?
Does it split comes out of his thing?
I agree.
Okay. Okay, so I'll need a motion on that then for me to pay it. You said one hundred percent then from the police.
Have a problem with that? Do you have a problem?
No, I'm just.
Not well. It it's a preventative thing. So we went through this all last year when it came to hooking up the building. A percentage came out of his, a percentage came out of the administrative side. Just to ensure that the building could operate.
Right.
Whether it's as a warming center, whether it's uh, you know, being able to do police business. Um, doing it as a preventive measure. This is why we talked about, do we purchase one?
Right.
Versus having a recurring fee. And I think at the time we decided we'll just rent them as we need them. At this time, so.
I think maybe in the long run, that's something we have to look at and catch up.
I I agree. I I think it's like, it it's something that requires a little plan.
Because this situation, they didn't even have the cord to hook it up. They had no fuel, so they couldn't operate it anyway. Plus they didn't need it. Five hundred and seventy-nine dollars, we could have bought one. That's my feelings.
Well, that's the thing is we need to make sure that we have cables at both buildings for the plugs that we have. Um.
Exactly.
That does limit what you can rent or acquire because not all of them are universal.
Right.
Pay for, so.
So I recall we 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 discussed doing using ARPA funds to purchase that. Is that correct?
We did and we uh, we ended up having some funds come back, but I don't think we've we've addressed how to. Leverage those funds.
Right.
I thought chief was going after eight. Something through the military.
He had talked about getting a D R M O. Uh, getting a generator through D M R O, which is military auctions. Um, it was mentioned. I I never heard any follow-through on it. Um, I could circle back there and see, because I know there's local D M R O here, Columbus and a few places, probably a hundred miles. They do it regionally. So you know, if that's where you want to go, those are diesel. Um, mechanics can be hard to find for those engines. Yeah, it it's a, they gotta be maintained.
Sure.
You do.
And then they're.
One every five years. They will start, they will start after a nuclear bomb as long as they're maintained and maintaining them. It takes a special skill set, so.
That was just the last I I knew that he was going after a grant and he was looking at the regional stuff, but.
Yeah.
From that point, I don't know where.
Well, I think we were talking, you know, a generator at the maintenance building, a generator here. With our performance. So I think that's something we need to address here soon or later. Obviously, we're into winter now, but.
Well, yeah, and and the other part of it is is. I think we have, uh, don't we have natural gas down there at the maintenance garage? It runs just down there?
Propane.
Okay. But we don't have that north of Amity. I know that.
Yeah, no.
So we, you know, anything that we got would have to probably be multi-fuel. Um, but we would also need a tank, like a propane tank or something like that, which.
Here or if we can get two, keep one there and one here. What?
I thought they had bought some propane tanks.
They may have.
I would say I think they bought some previously.
Thirty gallon tanks and a propane stand under thing at. Barry B right now.
Oh, that's.
I don't.
I call it a chicken eater, right?
Yeah.
That's my call.
But I mean. So all the masses probably easiest for them to maintain.
Right.
So ultimately, we would have to figure out what the average load is on each building. Figure out what would cover that and then also figure out what kind of fuels we would want to have in surplus to be able to operate them if needed. What it would take for a day, what it would take for two, three days. Um, because usually that's what you have to have on hand.
Exactly.
Uh, this, this was also something that we discussed and still I don't think anything's been planned out yet with the emergency management. Uh, coming to kind of emergency management of a potential grant coming. Where generators is what I just think I discussed with both of you guys um, about getting into that proposal. If the grant's successful.
That was like a thousand dollar grant for that, wasn't it?
No, 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 no. This was a a huge grant coming from the state that. When it's. Our proposal in our part in it so that we can at least be considered.
Right.
As part of it.
Okay.
So.
So on the maintenance end for us, we we can use it anywhere on our job. Right. We can, I mean, we can transfer around. I use my own now, so.
I know you said.
Should be doing, but in the case of a emergency that we.
I know you said you had last year during the storm.
But to make it movable, somewhat movable that we can.
Well, it sounds like we need to develop the requirements.
Yeah.
Figure out what what we can do, look into getting in on that grant.
Yeah.
Right? And what we need to save that and then also get a uh, estimate for three days of fuel at each building. Minimum.
Okay.
So how do, how do we want to do this a hundred percent from the police or are we going to split it?
I would say for now, just do the hundred percent from the police.
Okay. Can I have one of the trustees do a motion to pay it one hundred percent police budget?
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Great. And then I just have one other item. And that is with the end of the year. Um, and reviewing our outstanding payments. Um, we have five items that were issued that are what they call stale dated. Which are basically, we need to decide what we're going to do with them, whether we're going to reissue the payments. Or if we're going to issue them over to the state. Um, two of the payments I've had since voided, one was to one of the B Z A members. Who signed off that he has no intent of cashing the check. The check has been destroyed. Because he's volunteering his time, so he signed a form. We've gone in and voided that check. Another was to a vendor who has since decided that they are not going to collect on the bill. Um, it was one of the Ritter Plummin's with the top soil there from the beginning. Where they decided they were going to work out a deal with us on that. So that check has been voided. The other three, two of them go to a former police officer. They were payroll checks. Um, so that's why I I come to you guys because it was advised if I can get in contact with them. It's highly recommended to just reissue the checks since they are payroll checks. They've been taxed on them and they've been included in their tax filing. Um, I was able to locate the officer. And he provided me with a new address to if it's okay with the trustees for me to reissue those checks and mail it to him. The other one is a former Rhodes employee. Um, I believe it was the final check. It was dated July of two thousand twenty-one for thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents. With approval from you guys, I would also like to just reissue a check to that one to void these and get them cleared off the books. Can I have a motion from one of the trustees to reissue checks number three, four, zero, two, zero? To Stephen D. Nelson for one seventy-six thirty-eight. Check number three, four, six, two, four to Stephen D. Nelson for twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. And check number three, six, four, one, eight to Dale Mears for thirty-four dollars and sixty-nine cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Effective staying.
Now, there was, wasn't there another check? It was from February of two years ago. It was still outstanding.
We took care of that.
That one.
Care of.
Yeah, that one has already been taken care of a while. Um, I had. One was from December of two thousand twenty. That one was voided and one was from August thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one. Now, if you're talking about, we reissued a check. In January of two thousand twenty-two, at the end of January. So we've not reached the year yet. That check, that new check still has not been cashed.
Right.
So we'll, if it's still not cashed by the time we circle around this year, then that'll be another topic of discussion.
Okay, understand. Thank you.
And that is all on my report.
Very much. Uh, Robyn Cemetery.
All right. In our cemetery, we had uh, one cremation burial. I plowed the hill last month. Uh, we finished the year. Uh, with thirty burials total. We we sold three graves last year. One. We spent some time working on our records, getting those, trying to get those into digital form. Um, spent several days working on that. Uh, also would like to uh, send a reminder that clean off the cemetery is March first. Um, for our roads. We were, we worked on schoolhouse the week before Christmas, extended the uh, seven foot pipe, another seven feet to get a little wider, extended both the twelve inch and the fifteen inch pipe. Um, we we extend those out as well, so they they actually flew into the creek and stood on the side of the ditch. Um, we were on snow and ice previous to Christmas. And we cleaned up the, and we get, we got the trucks cleaned up, ready for the next one. We worked on all of our year-end items and we worked on our inventory and got that all up to date on the computer. And our equipment, our trucks, uh, they all ran great. They performed well during the extreme temperatures. Uh, we did have a hydraulic line blow um, Friday, like late Friday, so we worked on that. We got it back together. Um. We also used four tons of salt, a hundred and forty gallons of beet brine during the storm. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, in my other police department.
I did have some, Chief, one second. I wasn't sure if Karen had it or not.
All right, brother. There you go.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was an email. I thought it was.
Yeah, I was that right here.
He said that uh, he didn't have much reports. Steps are published on the website. Um, they are working to fix a glitch in the website. There was an issue with the uploading of some of the reports resident brought to my attention. Um, they also have an issue with how the website renders on a cell phone or a mobile device versus a computer. We're also working that. Um. Said that uh, Officer Barga will be heading up the neighborhood watch program and she will have more information. Uh. In the next month or so. Uh, he'll be holding the first ever chief's round table in March. The date is yet to be determined. That's what he got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, zoning.
Okay, um, I completed the update on the two thousand twenty-three annual office inventory. And turn that into the fiscal officer. Um, with my new job responsibilities, I would like to adjust the administration office hours. To open Tuesdays, nine AM to twelve PM. Wednesdays, one PM to four PM. Thursdays, nine AM to twelve PM. And with the option that anyone could call, you know, if they need to make an appointment. Um, they can. Um, this would allow me to perform my new duties. As the office administrator and continue with what I'm already doing uh, for the township. And I would like to request this in the form of a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjust the township administration office hours. To the following. Tuesdays, nine AM to twelve PM. Wednesdays, one PM to four PM. Thursdays, nine AM to twelve PM and any other times by appointment only.
Okay. Trustee Mears? Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, trash bills were mailed out on January fourth. I've been getting some phone calls. People have been concerned that they haven't received the trash.
I just got mine today.
So, uh, but they were mailed out on the, on the fourth, getting them, hey. Um, there are three pending permits right now. And the township is accepting applications for B Z A. And Board of Commission members. The applications can be found on the Perry Township website. Or they are available uh, here at the administration office for anyone interested in serving. One of these boards. We need um, the applications be returned to me by Friday, February the third, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, they can be mailed in, emailed or put in the drop box out there. Um, and if anyone has any questions, they can call me. I'll be more than happy to discuss. What both of those uh, boards do. And that's all I have. Thank you.
So not to put you on the spot, I hate to do this to you. Can you kind of give a synopsis of what? The B Z A and the B Z A, the zoning commission board.
So the people. B Z A board is the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if a resident wants to do something that doesn't fall into the zoning. Um, text. Then they have the option that they can go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and give their um. History or give, you know, whatever in order to see if the board will approve them to have a conditional use or a variance for whatever it is that they're doing. Such as a lot split or, you know, they may not have enough road frontage, that type of thing. Uh, the Board of Commissions is a board that will um, write the zoning text for the township. Such as right now, we have no fencing rules or regulations. We have um, nothing on solar panels, which is a really big thing right now. So that board would meet, discuss, do research. Come up with a um, the zoning and then it has to be sent to Montgomery County for approval. And then it comes to the board. So.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving along, uh, trustees reports. Uh, so let's see, um. Uh, so let's see, um. I have, I've had a something I'm gonna bring up in new business too. I had my meeting yesterday with Mr. Uh, Wit, Mo Wit from Lexington. Uh, he's gonna need help with this. Uh, so he wants me to give him and you guys his email cuz he'd just like for you guys to understand what this is. Um. It was, it was, it was a good, good conversation. Uh, we did it over uh, not, not go to, go to them. Yeah, we did it over that. Um, easy. I think it's gonna be okay, but it's gonna be time concerning, consuming. And I gave you these. So this is the one that I did. This is the one we have now.
What do you mean you did?
I did. I took Clay Townships. This is the one I did.
Okay.
This has never been accepted or anything else. This is the one we have. This is from two thousand twenty two. Okay, this is the one I took. So I need you guys to look at this. I need to uplift these and send them to him and then he will compare them. Uh, he does, it's a lot more, uh, he does federal and state policies. Uh, local changes, that, that's gonna be our responsibilities. So he's, you know, uh, it's a database. Um, policy and procedures. Um, as soon as he gets everything done, it's like a filing cabinet and like he stores things and all that stuff. Um, SharePoint, KMS uh, database. So it doesn't seem, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little work. It's not gonna be like that. So if that's okay with you guys, I share his. So if you get an email and it's Mark Reese Wit, but he goes by Mo. So, um, and then, uh, let's see. I met with the Brookville and New Lebanon regarding the fire contract. And have met with Mr. Hoops. I will be attending the O T A Conference and the prayer breakfast on Thursday. And that's my report. Some music.
Alright, uh, I guess this is kind of new business, but it was brought up, or old business. We brought it up before. I did reach out to the N V R P C. Uh, that annual fee is seventeen forty one fifty eight.
Seventeen.
Uh, one thousand seven hundred and forty one dollars and fifty eight cents. Uh, they said they would be, they would love to have us. Uh, they communicate with me anyway. I believe I've only been to one, one N V R P C meeting. And then today I did join uh, the Brookville Library, the lights, sirens and pizza for first responders. Uh, they had a good turnout. Ton of kids there. They enjoyed it, so. And then I've currently working on, I've reached out to a few municipalities about their online trash bill pay what they're using, and I'm trying to compile a list of those and then contact those companies. So.
Okay. Trustee Hartshorn?
Uh, continue to administer an update township social media, performed routine maintenance on the township P C systems and networks. Uh, performed general I T management, maintenance and upkeep of the township systems. Performed weekly driving inspections of township roads, cemeteries and nuisance properties. Uh, continued planning and research on the contract for the Township K nine program and handler. Uh, continued review of draft fire contracts. Met with the New Lebanon City Manager. Also met with the New Lebanon Fire Chief. Uh, I did step down from my O P W C position and notified the Montgomery County Township Association uh, and reviewed township audit information that was provided by Fiscal Officer Grow. I will also be attending the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference in Columbus on the twenty fifth and the twenty sixth. That's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, any old business? Got it. Okay. Can we, can we talk about that later or do you need an answer soon or?
I, I believe we need to get back with them. So to be honest, I, you guess, both I think are N V R P C prior to me coming on and I don't have much of opinion on it at this point, so I'm kind of using you guys' experience to.
It was sad, but we had, uh, basically, we couldn't afford to pay it.
Yeah.
Okay, the last couple of years, so we bowed out. They did offer to include us then and keep us in the loop on stuff, but uh, that wasn't a, something that we could afford to pay, unfortunately. Um, I don't think that's changed. I think we're still.
I don't, because we haven't participated in it since I've been in office, was that something that was paid solely from the general fund? Okay, yeah, at this point, I mean, nothing's really changed with the general fund. Um, I am looking into some potential options that we might help us in the future. But I'm not sure, um, we're kind of restricted with making any of the changes where the funds that are coming in because the way the township's set up with having portions of it incorporated Brookville and portions of it incorporated New Lebanon, it kind of restricts us as to how we can change the inside millage distribution. So I've gotta talk to, with um, several different areas to find out if that's even an option. Cuz right now, our inside millage only a point three zero percent of the inside millage goes to the general fund.
You know, I think it's worthy of tabling just for right now because we don't have a deadline for when we have to decide. But um, definitely something we'd wanna revisit as we figure out the issues with the.
Okay.
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 Um, do we wanna talk about the fire contract or old business?
Is that old business or new business? What do you think?
I would consider old business.
Okay. Yeah, uh, so we did talk about the fire contract in our organization meeting. So is, does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss on that or are we in agreement with it?
I think so.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and sign the fire contract with the Brookville and New Lebanon. And that's a three-year fire contract.
I'll second it.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Any new business?
Yes. Contract with uh, yeah, Christian for the money, the cemeteries. I imagine you guys have other contracts cuz I don't have it, but like to entertain a motion to.
Accept it. I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Uh, it is my understanding there is no increase issue.
No.
Exact same.
Trustee, oh, you made the mission, Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Music?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay, anything else? Okay, and we have visitors, uh. I have no one that wants to speak tonight. You already spoke.
Indeed.
Okay, if that's it, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second that motion.
Thank you, everybody.
Music?
Yes.
Trustee Mears?
Yes.
Trustee Hartshorn?
Yes.
I'll go to that contract so you guys.